Yeah, she has a lot of in-depth, like.
Hundred of everybody's mics to be turned on? You haven't already?
Hmm.
Alright, then I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting order. You can stand for the pledge, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, and go ahead with the roll call.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunnick?
Present.
Commissioner Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Elgaier?
Yes.
Chairman Yoder?
Here.
All present.
Alright, thank you. Next up, we have approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions? We have a motion?
I'd move to move the agenda as presented.
Second.
Alright, so we'll be supported. Discussion? Not all favor, that motion's A.I.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion period seven zero. Alright, next up, we are to public comments. Do you remember those who wish to public comment?
Play it.
Alright. Move on to Commissioner's comments. Commissioners, I wish to give any comments? Alright.
I will, yes. I went to any, um, Northern Michigan Community Action Agency. Their programs have been funded. So there are no adjustments for inflation, but we can rest assured that basic services for low-income people will be funded. So we don't have to worry about that.
Alright. Any other Commissioner's comments? Alright, if not, we will move on to our first action item, which is Government Finance Office Association, which is best known as GFOA. And we got Rebecca here that is gonna present that to us. She'll do a little presentation and then we'll open up the floor for questions. You have the packet in front of you that she'll be kinda briefly talking about. She won't necessarily be going through those items from my understanding, but they'll just give a general overview of GFOA. And just a little background, Rebecca did reach out to me and just kinda brought this to my knowledge a little bit. And so I asked her to just present that to the board so everybody has the same information and general understanding of this, so.
Okay, my goodness, wonderful question. And as Commissioner Yoder talked about, I'm gonna do some prepared remarks here and then I have a few questions. So I'm here to talk to you today.
Yes.
Your first and last name? Oh, Rebecca Hendrick. D-G-N-D-R-I-C.
Okay, and Rebecca is R-E-B-B?
R-E-B-B, C-G-A. Thank you.
Rebecca, who are you representing? I'm sorry.
Let's talk, I live in this whole country.
Okay, good, very good, thank you.
But you're part of the association?
Let me get there. I'll explain to you. Well, okay, so I'm here to talk about how I think you can improve your budget document in order for your constituents and stakeholders to better understand what you do as a county and how much it costs. I'm proposing that you use a model of a budget document that is advocated by Urban Finance Officers Association, which represents public finance officials in the United States and Canada at state or private zones and all over, and all over governments. They have two thousand members. And they do lots of stuff to promote good financial management practices in government. GFOA uses this model to assess governments' budget documents for receipt of their distinguished budget presentation work. Now, as I mentioned, I met Rebecca with Mr. Dyer and Mr. Yoder yesterday. And Mr. Dyer knows the organization very well. Your kind of, probably does as well. The GFOA website has lots of information about the three awards, recommended practices in all areas of state and local management management. They do conferences. They have a really good review for, uh, Urban Finance Review for local governments. It's run by a really smart guy who I've known for a long time. He does really good stuff. Short articles on local governments. They also, GFOA also has a number of guides for smaller governments in the areas of capital improvements, debt management, revenue, revenue collection administration, designing a budget, operational budgeting, and much more. Now, let me give you a little, I'm sort of jumping ahead here, but let me give you a little background on myself. Why do I know so much about this stuff? I'm a retired professor of public administration from the University of Illinois Chicago. My husband and I retired here to beautiful Leland County some years ago, a little while ago. My focus there involved teaching and research and for 25 years with state and local government. Public finance and financial management. I was at UIC for 25 years where I taught a budgeting course that required their master of public administration that was a required course for their master of public administration program. I taught this stuff at the Ph.D. level and did lots of research on all these topics. For the master's course, I required the students to assess a budget document from a local government in Illinois according to the GFOA criteria. Write a report to give to the government and then do a presentation of the report in class, which was oftentimes intended by the local governments that they were working with. I found governments to do the project who wanted to do, who wanted to receive the GFOA award, but had not yet received it. And I also wanted to make sure that I had a document that was able to be assessed from those governments. I didn't want students simply looking at a bunch of numbers and not real documents. I counted the number of governments I did for this project before I retired and over 200 governments participating in that project during my time teaching in this class, although some did it more than once. Prior to the 2024 election, I wanted to learn more about my new local governments in Leland County and local governments in Michigan in general. My expertise really is in local governments in Illinois and specifically local governments in Chicago metropolitan regions. Looking at the Leland County website, I looked at your annual finance report, what you guys call the audits, the long list of spending items in the spreadsheets that you call your budget. To be honest, I really can't figure out what you do. And I can't really tell much about how much it costs you to do that either. So all of this is the basis for my recommendation that you begin to move towards doing things that improve your budget and citizens' understanding of Leland County government and its associated local governments and agencies. So no, I'm not with GFOA. But I know we actually had a number of Ph.D.s and master's students who worked for the GFOA. I noticed that the last Ph.D. student I published with also works for GFOA. So I know a whole lot about the organization. So that's, but really, I'm coming from this as a citizen and trying to understand your finances, your financial management, some of the issues that you have. Now, the GFOA website has all kinds of information available about the award and the criteria they use to assess state and local government budgets. There are about 25 total criteria for the award. I originally chose 11 that I thought would be doable for Leland County's work. Some of those are pretty hard. Since my meeting with Mr. Dyer yesterday, I've added a 12 criteria on the capital budget, which focuses on budgeting, capital expenditures, which are putting in infrastructure. The capital improvement plan, which I understand that you're gonna be going over this afternoon, is an important first step in the capital budgeting process. I show these 12 criteria in the handout that I may available to you with the explanations of each of the criteria as shown on the GFOA website. I also want to mention that the 25 criteria in this list, or in the GFOA's website, are essentially the same as the recommended budgeting practices that appear in the Michigan Department of Treasury Uniform Budget Manual for Local Governments, which is dated April 2024. Section seven of that document is entitled Recommended Practices. And it has a subsection on the budget package, which includes what local government budget documents should have same items as what is shown in the GFOA criteria on the website. I think having these items in your budget document would greatly improve the transparent transparency of Leland County finances to citizens and therefore improve your accountability to us, which are all things with GFOA. Leading these criteria will also help you follow more sound financial policies and practices by focusing more on the big revenue and spending picture for the county, future events, and possibilities, and future possibilities and opportunities as they might arise. It's a plan that allows, the budget should be a plan that allows local governments to steer the boat of the county rather than simply reacting to revenue and spending events as they happen. So a budget should be a plan for all your revenues, expenditures, and all the stuff, and also your operations. Counties are complicated local governments as well as municipalities and counties. Townships have, our counties have multi-layered tiers of relationships with other governments at the mission, operational, and financial levels. You have courts, you've got judges, you've got revenue, collection, and distribution for other local governments. You've got roads, lots of elected officials, combined health department, and county emergency services, which are, you know, the county is quite central for that, those things. The ice storm really got my attention this winter. You know, and what the counties had to do to react, as well as the electoral companies. I'm not surprised you guys got all these small little electoral companies. I'm sort of still wondering how that works. You have various connected authorities. You have DAM authority, a Rock Hill authority, other connected agencies, the Conservation District, the Council on Aging, many counties use that to deliver their senior services. My national motto for local governments here in Michigan are not very complicated because the majority of their revenue is from property taxes, which is relatively easy to project in a budget. In 2024, Leland County got about 65% of its revenue from all local government funds from property taxes. You've got another 23% of its revenue for state and local government combined. Combined that together, that's about 80%. So revenues are not complicated, but it would be nice to know how the government, how the county projects its revenues. These kinds of things that should be explained in your budget. I see from your annual financial report that you don't have much capital expenditures. It's only about 2% of total local governments. But, or rather, of your total governmental expenditures. But I suspect there's more going on here, and I'm not sure what things go in your capital expenditures or how capital spending is thought about relative to your operations. In the meeting I had yesterday with Mr. Dyer, he was concerned about your decision about capital spending. And I think having a complete picture of capital spending and how those needs are going to be addressed in the near future is good financial stewardship. So I think the GFOA criteria on capital budgeting was a good thing. I added that to the list that I sent yesterday. Leland County is also relatively unique compared to similar counties and other counties in Michigan. I forwarded to Mr. Dyer and Mr. Yoder, maybe you all received it, uh, tables with financial, economic, and demographic data for Michigan, some of those are for Michigan as a whole. But my, but the data focuses on the counties of Antrim, Benzley, Charleboy, Emmett, Manastee, and Grand Traverse. Grand Traverse is obviously much larger, but here nearby. It's not a secret that Leland County is very wealthy in terms of median household income and property values. But one thing that really got my attention in those figures is the summertime population increase in Leland County. Northwest Networks did a study in 2022 that showed that Leland County's population increased by 126% in the summer. It increased from 26,006,30 to 60, to over 60,000. Grand Traverse's population only increased by 47%. Benzley increased by 121%, but Charleboy increased by 72%. So I was wondering what does this population increase do to Leland County's spending? Does it affect the sheriff? Does it affect the courts, the roads, probably? But the roads are operated through the road commission, which is a separate government, government from Leland County. If summertime population increase has an impact on Leland County's spending, then it sucks that you guys can't tax tourists for the services that they use. Maybe the road commission gets more gasoline taxes from the state based on higher gas sales on the county, maybe that helps. But these are all things that should be addressed in your budget. Only 31 governments in Michigan have received the GFOA award for their budget, and only four of these are counties. However, 20 counties in Michigan have received the GFOA award for the annual comprehensive financial report. That's our audit. So it's a lot easier to receive that award. GFOA gives three or four awards. But those counties that have received the GFOA award for their annual financial report, or Grand Traverse, Shippewee, and Meskeville counties, and some of the things that goes in the comprehensive financial report that GFOA looks at for their award can also go into your budget. The four counties that received, in Michigan, that have received the GFOA budget award, I admit, are not great models for budgeting. LaPierre County is sort of close to Leland County in terms of the general fund amount, but it spends $32 million for community mental health and $18 million for other non-major government funds. LaPierre County also has a viable budget, three times the population, and it cannot be downloaded as a single document, which is really frustrating. Ottawa County is much larger than Leland County in terms of population, budget size. It's got a lot of interesting detail. They have 11 commissioners. And it, but it has a nice picture of them. Livingston County is much larger than Leland County in terms of population, budget size, budget document is 50 pages, which is way too long in my opinion. But, you know, I, I think it would interest, it would interest you to go, to look at their budgets and their things, like their organizational chart and budget, budget message. That's kind of one of the most important things. I think it's in that GFOA document for you all to do in those criteria, or the budget message. And I think that's maybe gonna be one of the hardest for you to do, those criteria and the capital stuff, I think. However, the city of Cadillac has received the GFOA budget award for many years. Cadillac's population is about 10,000. Its expenditures for government funds is about 12 million. So it's really a little smaller than Leland County, but it really is a good document, and they've been doing it for a long time. They also have a six-year capital improvement plan, which is 150 pages, but it doesn't mean, it's missing certain things like criteria for prioritizing their capital expenditures. But city of Cadillac has a budget message, table of contents, I think, that I think would be interesting for you. I don't think the organization's sure. And so that's, that's my case. For all these reasons, I would like to see you move towards a more formalized budget document with priorities, goals, and objectives, and projections for revenues and expenditures, and as well as a camp.
So question, you said LaPierre County is similar to us in tax revenue, but they spend $32 million on, how?
Uh, community mental health is, I don't know if it's a component or if it's a special revenue fund.
It has to be, like, we have $12 million for the whole year.
Well, they're, they're generally, it's similar to you in the general fund amount. But then once you add the special revenue funds and all the government funds and get price fines, you know, you're up to a lot of money. I don't know, that community mental health may be an unpriced fund, I don't know.
Yeah, it's gotta, it's gotta be, you know.
I mean, I've looked at it, but I, you know.
Okay. But first, I, I don't know, could we change places for about three months?
No.
Okay. As part of your presentation, you, you made a comparison to a ship and steering a ship. And right now, we're a ship coming into the harbor at this particular stage. My question is, how much can be, is really flexible enough at this stage with really a couple of months until we're scheduled to approve our budget? How fast can you move? I mean, you don't want to move so fast that you flip the ship either.
Right, you know, to be honest, I don't understand, I don't know enough about how I move, and you're looking at one to understand how fast your budget process, how it goes. I can sort of watch things online. I looked at a couple of videos of your budget last year. We relate last year's budget, we relate to it.
We had a, a, not a full-time administrator, a temporary administrator, but really, the budget has been on hold, I think. It's been running kind of a continuous budget for about two years. And so this is really the first time that, correct me if I'm wrong, it hasn't been here, but it just hasn't been a lot of time as far as putting into ways to change. I mean, we've continued our same habits the past two years without, without much change.
Yeah, I'm aware that you had a number of, you know, the changes in the finance of the administration, the finance of all of this, when hiring up. You know, so that, that takes a waiting. But now that you have a county administrator, I think it depends on you all. You know, how, how easily do you guys agree? Now, I'm, you know, all the municipalities and local governments, I look at, I'm not a policy area, I mean, there were three or four of these board members pursuing each other. But, you know, not much getting done in those governments. It doesn't strike me that you guys agree.
Well, I, it, you know, how, how fast are disagreements among us? To me, it's, it breaks down into two versions. One is the structure, how much, and to me, I probably on this board, the structure part where you can probably come to terms with fairly quickly. Now, how much gets put in each pot, that might be a different discussion.
I need to start with that. You know, what, what struck me is that I don't know what your purpose are. I don't know how much you spend, I don't know what your ser, what are your services? I couldn't tell what you guys do for emergency management. No, I couldn't. And it wasn't clear to me until, in fact, my girlfriend, who's lived here forever, said, "Well, you know, the counties do roads." And I'm like, "No, it's called the road commission." You know, and it took me a while to figure that out. And, and if that's in your, that kind of information is in your budget document, I think that goes a long way towards telling people what you do. And then you list those expenditures by, revenues are not as important, but you list those expenditures by department, by service. You know, what are the primary service areas in these departments? What are a little bit about the goals or objectives, a little bit about what services they provide? How much, what are the expenditures?
This is very, very helpful information. But since our budget, we used to do our budget back October 1st or 12th. There's a date that we adhere to. The last couple of years, because we've been kind of in flux with administrators, we did go till November and perhaps December. But this sounds like a construct that we would work on for the next, for the next year.
Six months.
Because we've worked, we've got a couple of months now. I don't know how much we can, we can do some.
You know, I mean, I think the rule is gonna be on Mr. Dyer. Or his staff, your staff, and the finance, I'm sorry.
Sounds like a 2026.
Well, I guess this is the main reason I asked Rebecca to come. Just the priorities that she has listed out in here, I think is something that I want the board to strive for, to be more transparent, that when somebody goes online, they can pull up a lot better of the information. But I see Commissioner Bunnick has a question or got his hand up.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you talked about move towards a more formalized budget. Is there a, a form that you follow or that you, that the GFOA has?
Yeah, well, okay, so if you look online, I presented the criteria I presented, with the exception of the capital budget. The, the criteria are presented in the order in which the GFOA sort of, not expects, but usually sees, the order in which they usually see those items in the budget document. But again, I would encourage you to go look at the city of Cadillac's budget document. You know, it's, in fact, GFOA used to organize the criteria according to sort of service areas or objective areas, which, and then they switched that around, and now they present the criteria in the order in which they usually appear in the budget document.
So is this, is this the criteria you use for that outline?
Yeah, that's only 12 of the criteria. There's a total of 25 criteria that GFOA had. I picked out from those 25, I picked out those I thought could be done by Leland County in, in the near term. And then with the conversation I started with Mr. Dyer, I said, "Oh, let's do the capital budget."
So this would be the outline or the criteria that you, you want to itemize it with?
That we could start with, from my understanding. That we could start out with, from my understanding, right?
So my, my understanding is this is somewhat in chronological order. Number one being how you establish your budget.
Yeah, in terms of big picture down to small picture, yes. That, that's, yeah, that's a good way to put it. Continue here. Yeah, 'cause the last thing, you know, you sort of have, that's on there is, item 11 is charts and graphs.
Yeah.
You know, that's sort of very specific. The biggest picture item here, and I, to be honest, I don't think it's the most difficult of the boards, is items number one and two, priorities and issues in the budget overview.
That's where you start.
Right. And if you look at the budget message, it might be instructive to look at the budget message that's for LaPierre County out of how we live, keep coming, and city of Cadillac, to see what their budget messages look like, to see what's in there, what kind of things they put in there.
We already have a proposed budget in front of us without the message.
We used to provide you a message.
Well, the message notice should have particular things, is what they're asking.
Yeah, we used to do that. Until you started your budget process.
Alright, do we have any other questions, comments, and commissioners? Alright. Thank you. I think this is something that, yeah, we'll work with our administrator on. Do you have any questions or?
I just, what I'm not hearing Rebecca say is, we're not, she's not saying we're spending our money improperly. She's not saying we approve our budget incorrectly. What I am hearing is that we can improve how we communicate that budget and your priorities to the public. I think that's really the, the scope. The budget message goes a long way to that. How we have that, how we have the budget available online and even, even, as you indicate, just having it as a single document that can be downloaded, for example, as, as a, perhaps as a PDF. A number of the, I've gone out and looked at a number of the, the municipalities that have won this award, as, as Rebecca indicates, and looked at the things that they do. And a lot of them have what I would characterize as a, as a, as a budget explanation. What, you know, a budget that briefly describes, here's, here's our priorities. Would, it would have something along the lines of, because of a substantial increase in the amount of seasonal residents, not just visitors, but residents, Leland County spends a, spends something more on law enforcement because of those, the needs that that, those seasonal residents present to, to, to the public. That'd be one message. Maybe you won't agree with that. Maybe we don't agree that that's, that's really why we do that. But that's the kind of thing that can be communicated to the public. And just even, even a simple explanation that we do not pay for roads with your property taxes, that those are, those are handled through the gas tax and the road commission. Just a couple of sentences or a paragraph that describes that could be.
I mean, we, we have a special village. Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd like to do.
It pays almost nothing compared to what the road commission, road commission spends on roads.
But that, but that village goes to the road.
It does, it does.
The other, the other item here that is, you guys can wrestle with my hand, but we just started, it's slow, are the performance measures. So how, how do you know your sheriff's doing your job? How do you know whenever his manager's doing their job? Do you know how much more sheriff is costing you in the summer than you do in the winter? You know, I think moving towards those kinds of performance measures are really very helpful for your operation when you guys do.
I did just look up the, the website for GFOA, and there's a lot of information there and a lot of learning opportunities, a lot of resources.
I, I mentioned with that before I came, like I said, they had these small little guides, a guide for small governments, which had, you know, a guide for budgeting, a guide for CFP, a guide for. for CIP, a guide for debt, and I have, I think I have one for CIP, I'm not sure they call those, I have a copy of the little guide for CIP for my students, but they do have a lot of critical education in there.
All right, I think I've mentioned to you in, in, in reports that Kathy has pursued membership in the GFOA and has done already some of their, their basic, well, maybe Kathy, you can explain the exact courses that you've taken in that, in that regard. Yes?
No, I'm sure, yeah, I, I am now.
We are live.
Michigan GFOA, and I'll be attending September, September, Michigan, and I'm also in your budget. So the over the next two years, attending classes in county finance, it's a three session, or a three course session, and it takes two years to do it, but if you take the first two successfully, the third one, they don't charge you for, so that's my goal. And I've got my staff doing the online courses with me that are available for non-members, but if, so right now, I'm cranking off some things for Administrator Dyer as well, so he has some of the things you mentioned from Michigan, so I am looking forward to continuing education.
And as I said, I think together, we can add some of these things to the final budget document that you enact in, hopefully in November.
Might I, is, might it possibly be a goal to have two people in your department make that, achieve that goal rather than one, just, it's always good to have a backup.
I'm sure that would be a method to.
And I think there'd be a worthwhile adjustment for the calendar.
And I would absolutely support that as well, for sure.
Yeah.
All right, do you have any follow-up questions? Comments? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome to Leilam.
All right, next up, action item number two, we got the review of the capital improvement program document. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to go through that, I know the planning commission put quite a bit of work, and the planning department put quite a bit of work into creating this and getting it ready for us. Is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I actually would, really would defer to Kathy and her review of that. She's prepared the document, I don't know if you've handed that up yet, Kathy?
Yeah, we have it.
The document that kind of summarizes that, that and a few additional items that are going to be on your plate for decision regarding the budget.
This is a document that was started when Sean Conne was your finance director, and I took over when he departed, and then Richard and I brought it full again, 24, the 25 pieces. And it's a spreadsheet of everything that I have gleaned from department requests, some CIP in year one and year two. I did pick up a few in year three, four, because you'll see the CIP re-priorizes things a little differently than what you have shared with me. So where, where we have gone in the past with our budget process is, looked at the overview, you indicate to administration or to the finance director, thumbs up, thumbs down, need more information, I wasn't aware of that, you know, just let us know where you're at. Also, I talked to Administrator Dyer about the organization of this document, everyone organizes their thoughts differently. I categorized it pretty much by who's more responsible, who's asking for this, who, who's making the request. So there, there's that to take into consideration, that we all organize our thoughts differently. So if you have a question about, I heard about this, where is it? I can show you where it is on the document, okay? So Administrator Dyer, did you want me to just walk through?
Question, question first, if I can, because you, did you take the existing capital improvement plan and add those to this list? I just saw a couple, just checked, they were on there.
I picked up the 26 and the 27. I looked at those in the capital improvement plan. There are some in 28 that are on there because the department had requests. So there's, there is a bit of a, and John and I recently discussed this yesterday about the CIP process, where that's a request of the planning, department planning commission, they prioritize, they prioritize, they don't necessarily communicate with us, there's, I see that disconnected, there's slightly, because I'm looking at the chill tower out back here. We know it's in the 25 budget, in the CIP, it's in, so this is where we're doing cross referencing, seeing where we can bring these things together and stay on track.
But I'm still trying to understand, I see the sheriff's office request for a pole barn, completed in 25 and 26, and I don't see it on the list.
And the pole barn in the CIP is in year, I'm looking at the grid that they put in this document. I saw a second pole barn in 28.
Okay, so what's in here doesn't necessarily match here.
Correct. I, I was, and that's why we're talking. I picked up two years of CIP from here to see if it was here, but I also know in budget requests from department heads, such as buildings and grounds, the chill tower, it's in your budget for 25, and in here, in the CIP, is two years out. So I'm trying, we're trying to bring all this around, find out your priorities, using the CIP as a tool, and also listening to your department heads when you're elected and their requests. And that's what this document is, it's kind of a culmination of all of that. This is a living document, it's in motion for the next few weeks, and this is where you can read through it and say, gosh, I read that, and here are soft CIP, so we're just going to try to bring all this together, find out your priorities.
So when does the group that does the CIP come, communicate with us about what we would like in the CIP?
They really don't.
They really don't.
They really don't.
And that's, that's a big flaw, I think.
Well, again, as I, as I mentioned in previous meeting, there is a process that permits you to take that, that process over, and the reaction was, that's kind of a lot of work, and they do a good job of it. I think you might want to adopt a hybrid process, or consider a hybrid process, where they collect the items from the various departments and commissions that work within the county. They create a list of projects, they do the work to determine, you know, recommendations regarding what they may cost or might cost in the future, and then they present that to you, unprioritized, that you then prioritize as part of your budget process. So what Kathy has done, and I really applaud her for doing this the way it is presented, she's taken out of the CIP those things that we as an administration believe are either going to be, either will, will be addressed in the 2025 budget already, or that we're recommending you adopt in the 20, as part of the 2026 budget. That does not mean that you can't consider those things like a second pole barn that, that the planning commission projected for 2028, you could consider it now in this budget. But it, really, the question is, which bite of the elephant are you going to take first? And we're recommending that you take, that the first bite that you take, are these are the things that, that finance and administration believe you can do now. That's not to say you can't add some of those other things in that second bite of the elephant and say, well, maybe we'd like to add this to our consideration as a project for the 2026 budget. So it's really just a question of how you, like I said, which bite of the elephant you're going to take first, and this is our first run-through, and Kathy's done a very, very good job in, 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 and some of the stuff you'll see down at the end is personal staffing, wages and benefits issues that are not really, and would never be considered in the CIP. But this is a list of things that you, we know for sure, you're going to need to work on and make a decision on for this budget process. And, and again, emphasize it for a third time, that doesn't mean you're limited to these things. You can add things that are on the CIP, you can add things that aren't even on the CIP. But as you work through this, I think you'll see, these are the major points that, that based upon your statement of priorities, we started looking at. And again, add to or subtract it as you, as you see fit.
So there was a hand, I don't know if you want to engage her during our meeting, but.
It's up to you, really, but we certainly have no opposition to that.
Fine with me.
Well, we need our treasurer to stay up there, though.
Did you just add?
One quick question, who's on your CIP?
It's the planning commission.
Only the planning commission?
Yes, it's only the planning commission, and that's, that's determined by, by Michigan statute. Again, that statute says, this board could, could replace that, replace the planning commission and do it themselves. There is a provision of the statute that permits that. I kind of would suggest a, a hybrid process, where the planning commission provides information, and you do the prioritization. I think that, that would be, that would make a whole lot more sense.
Does it, does that go through roads?
Excuse me?
Does that go through roads, does that plan the process, CIP go through roads?
It really doesn't.
No.
It really doesn't, because we don't finance them directly. And they're, and even though we contribute a, a small amount of their budget, they, they may, they determine how that's going to be used themselves.
The road commission is independently elected, so.
Right.
My neighbor's road.
The CIP.
How's your road?
CIP in general is, is requests that were from different department heads, that's something that the, the planning department sends out to different departments, requesting proposals, and then the planning commission goes through and grades these priority based on the information that each department sent about a specific project. So these are the grades that the planning commission pretty much put forward, based on the feedback they got from each project, from the different departments. So, yeah, that's a simple explanation. Mr. Wessel.
I, I, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Because I don't know what we've got to plan with, because I don't know how much the basic program we're already committed, and I don't know what revenue we got coming in. So it's hard for me to even consider a list of, of capital improvement projects unless they're emergency. And I'm not, very many of these are emergency on our list. Are we going to make cuts in the operating budget to pay for more capital improvement? Is the treasurer going to tell us we have less money or more money than we think we do? So it's, it's hard for me to do this assignment without knowing what we got to work with.
I did want you to have the list, so if you could have a summary of everything that is on here, so you can start looking at those things. I know that revenue is that, did you have agenda for future meeting?
Yeah.
And John was under that impression.
Yes, however, I mean, as it currently stands to the adjusted, I mean, we're really using fund balance to balance operations without these items.
Correct. The only items that are on this list that are built in here are the capital outlay for the sheriff is in here, to increase his $15,000 capital outlay to $18,000 for vests, rear units and ventilators, he asked for 18, that is in here. So that number's here. And the jail also, they do the same thing, they buy vests and, you know, some equipment, and they just ask for a slight increase, and it went, oh, he just rolled it. He rolled his number, so it's the same. And so those are built in. Then there are things that are not, everything on this list would have to be added to this budget as you choose them.
Everything on, on the list that you provided?
And those that are not, so the 28 projects, so I don't consider those out.
So if I'm reading this right, we're going to be adding almost 1.3 million to the last year's budget.
I didn't put any final numbers on this list.
I'm just going by the number you have at the bottom.
That actually is only for broadband, which would be covered by DTR, and the district council units, which is already in the 25 budget, that column you're looking at is 25.
So actually, it'd be a lot more.
Well, it's anything in the estimated cost column that isn't already in 25 or 26. So you can see even just the, the equipment for the sheriff and EMS, I didn't put any charges in there, but it's well, it's only one and a half million dollars.
We'll just get them for a while.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking, I thought these work sections, sessions were not supposed to be live broadcast, and it looks like we're on live here.
Why not?
Why not? They're just not, we never have had them done, and I don't think it's part of our policy to have them on live.
I asked, I had constituents ask, and I reached out to Jim and Steve, I don't know why we wouldn't, and I don't.
Do you have a board motion that says special sessions, executive and regulars, are your, are your rules?
It's our policy.
Because you don't do finance committee, any, any other committees and commissions live.
Well, when we have our meeting next month, I will suggest a change to our rules of order that allow us, I think transparency in our weekly budget and finance is critical.
Hold up, no. Fine, no. I mean, we're violating our own policy right now.
Pardon?
We're violating our own policies right now by doing this. So I just, I'm not sure.
It says what we will broadcast, I don't think it says what we won't.
I think checking with the first office in the future would be a great opportunity for communication.
All right, Mr. Algar?
So this is a lot of work for the planning commission, and they do it instead of how we're having to do it, frankly, but the way, I think we need a hybrid, because I haven't been on the commission as long as commissioners, Wessel and, and Bonnick, but, and Walters, but frankly, we don't have extra money. So we pretty much fund operations. We've got a, my sense is every year, we've got about a million dollars we hold in abeyance to pay for the stuff that comes up, because things do come up every year. Tractors break, cars get crashed, cooling towers die. So it's like this, we've known for a year that we need to replace the cooling tower. So it's like this, we've known for a year that we need to replace the cooling tower. So that'll go into that. But it's going to take some teaching, Administrator Dyer, to get us to conceive of, of more long-term projects, because the mindset has always been, we don't spend any money we don't have to spend. We just don't. We don't do extras. That's been the mindset. We cover expenses with the tax dollar, and we're very, very, very careful.
So those are expenses.
And there are things we always have to take care of. So I'm open to, to a more long-term planning process, and I'm really interested in how we're going to do that. It makes sense, it's what every person, family, business, government should do. It's just that we don't have any extra money.
Well, if I could just reject...
Go ahead, yeah, because I got a question then.
Okay. As John was stating too, some of these things are recurring. Like we always know the medical examiner will come in in the fall with their new number of their contract. So those things are on here, so we don't lose track of things that aren't in this budget yet. We know there'll be a slight increase. So, but we still have a medical examiner, that's not going to change. So there are routine things in here, such as soil conservation invoices for services. We just haven't got the final number projected for '26. Early childhood, you've got that, that has its own mileage, we'll be discussing that. It's just sitting here so that we don't lose track of it in the process. Playing broadband, we know that's going to be finished this year with DTR money. I hope it doesn't go into '26. It'd be nice if it could be done in '25. There's a few things for the board to consider just with regard to past practice and maybe want to reconsider veterans burial increase from 300 to a different dollar amount per internment of a veteran buried in the county. I think this year we've only interned one veteran, and 300 has been the normal number for a long time. I did reach out to Michael Ruff with Fran Travers County Veterans Affairs, and he has some counties that are as much as 1,200 for internment. I don't think we've ever discussed it, but it was floated out there, maybe the board should talk about that. Is it a huge thing? It is not, but it's important. We are reconstituting a rotation copy machine. We got away from that for a few years. The administrative assistant, executive assistant is on board keeping track of those, so we're looking at two copy machines. That's funded through your DUT fund. We charge each department for their copy use. I'm recommending that we also look at the charges per copy for, to fund the DUT fund by department copy charge. It hasn't been adjusted since 2018. It would be helpful, copiers are more expensive. Administrator Dyer said also because of, you know, just history, looking, and, and it's a learning curve for all of us, you know? We've always purchased our copiers. So if the question does arise, should we be leasing? So maybe we look at it, you know, and just evaluate it again. In the motor pool, the sheriff is asking for four patrol cars. It would be pre-scheduled replacements, which we're used to. We do this every, every year, we sell surplus vehicles. He's asking for one additional vehicle outside of the normal rotation of three, and he's asking for a permanent assignment of a TNT truck to Marine Division. It's a temporary assignment right now, but he's going to be presenting that he asks you for reclassification of TNT position to an SRO, School Resource Office. They'll come to you with that request. I'm just putting it on the list so you kind of know what's coming.
What's TNT?
Uh, that's...
Trauma narcotics.
Trauma narcotics, thank you. And then EMS has said, gosh, if we're going to have a surplus patrol car, we would like taking over one of the older ones. And don't strip all the material out of it, the radios and everything, because when you do, you leave holes in those cars, they're pretty much banged up. But they'd like to take it and get rid of their car, which is 165,000 miles. So that's kind of a cross-departmental request, and, and I picked that up in the narrative in this document. Administrator Dyer also has said that he, he's looking at enterprise as an option. I know that the boards previous have reviewed it, are going to be looking at it again. I think we also should increase the mileage charge on our vehicles from 50 to 75 cents per mile under 80,000. We have from 25 cents to 50 cents per mile for anything over 80,000. We typically sell our vehicles between 80 and 125,000 per miles in this rotation. But cars are more expensive to replace, so if we have to have money in that fund, this is how you get it, in charge by mile. Now, the sheriff's equipment and the EMS equipment requests that are in your narrative, they're not built into the budget except for those two capital outlay items, is the sheriff will be asking for a duty weapon platform and accessories with potential trade-in on retired firearms. And this is the cost, he says to me 54,000 plus ammunition of 15. Also...
What is that? A duty weapon?
I have on all new guns, all new guns for the families to kill.
He's got their guns.
She'll present. I'll, I'll let him explain, I'm just giving you the...
You're right, I'm sorry.
Highlight. I, I know a lot about, a little about a lot of things, but we've got to get the experts in here to talk about it.
Okay.
Then we have communications projects where we have some upgrading to the, and I know the acronym NICE, J N I C E, what's the acronym?
Actually, I don't know.
Okay, it's the recording system for dispatch. They need a software update, so he's got a quote in here with WSI for 21,000. They also need to upgrade to our, our GIS Pro, to our current Flex GIS server, and this is something that also involves equalization. And so that's another 10. Now, I believe we're very used at emergency services regarding the radios.
Oh, well, me and Commissioner Monick as well.
Okay. And they're looking at the fact that our radio system, county-wide, is going to either need re-encryption, or we need a fully radio system. We still have this year's payment to make and next year's payment to make. This year, this year's payment. For all the radios for the county, it's a million dollars. Now, that would be a lease agreement with, it's more roll, more likely. They have corner on the market of this. Will use their money, so it's not a million dollars now, but it's been $276,000 a year. And it was a 10-year amortization, and the radios only lasted seven years. It's like their Apple phone. They know what they're doing. Then AED replacement, it's normal, you know, $5,000. We replace these AED pads, they age out, this is a normal request, so there's not, that's not an unusual request. Then we have a broad group of furniture and fixture requests from Buildings and Grounds, and I believe some of that is mostly for the Buildings and Grounds office space, with the exception of a proposal to convert the employee lunchroom to an exercise room. He also has some requests for some additional IT devices and whatnot for his department, and that's reflected in another category, just to help me keep organized. We do have department projects. The Register of Deeds, she works on the Automation Fund, and she's going to present the plant net preservation, it's a five-year project, she's going to cash out $10,000 for metering, I guess for the next five years she'll present. Equalization, I know we've talked about this a little bit, this is me, my note, that the mapping fund used to be under the directorship of the Planning Director, but planning doesn't do mapping anymore. Planning has relinquished mapping to equalization, so I'm wondering if the assignment of that fund should be put under Andrew. Sure. So it's just a, who's in charge of that fund? That's just why I have it on the list, so we can talk about it and see that makes sense. Equalization, they'd like a color scanner, $1,000. It's, they've not asked for new equipment in some time, so I just put that on the list. The Clerk's Office has an ongoing vital statistics project. It's, it was budgeted in '24, rolled to '25, it's ongoing, it's not new. Recycle, there's been talk about, and it's in the recycle budget, it rolled, because it keeps rolling forward without any action on it, and that is regarding some additional lighting, electricity, cameras to recycle sites. And so that's rolling. Senior Services would like a new program for their produce program. They've been using the FDA program with the State of Michigan, and it's not very user-friendly to seniors. And they'd like to develop their own farmer's market program, so that's a new program. That's on the list. Keep in mind that Drain Commissioner is in the pre-drain engineering of Schaumburg, Timberland, Little Glen and Number One Drain, where the county will have an obligation to make their contribution to those drains if they come to fruition, either it could be this year, it could be next year, it could be in '27, but keep it in mind, going forward, we have drains in the process. And also, you are aware because of claims accounts, that you front the engineering costs for all of those drains every year as they're being developed. And then Parks and Rec, we have an undetermined project, but it has funding set in Fund 470. It has the earmark to be the match for the DNR grant for the Veronica walking, that Veronica Valley walking trail, should that come to fruition. There is a mansion there, so there is $110,000 set aside that really has a project attached to it, but it's been earmarked, former administrator, interim administrator, Richard Lewis, had us put money aside, $110,000. That came out of the general fund, that of all, you know, the cost means we don't generally do that on things that aren't actual project show, because that's general fund cash flow, which John and I worked together on, and you have seen the ebb and flow, where we're fat with money, just December, January, February, March, April, and then February, and June, July. Then we climb again, because John has started the collection of all the collections to go to revenue again. So when you remove money from the general fund, you're removing money from our cash flow. And that's why putting money out in the general fund to Parks for an undetermined future project, it, it didn't shackle us, but it's like, yeah, we probably...
It shackled the cash.
Yeah, yeah. Then I, there's some yellow boxes here, I need a little verification for Buildings and Grounds, because I'm, I'm reading two different descriptions of things in these documents, between the narrative of the Buildings and Grounds and the CIP, that perhaps when they reference sewer plant control for Government Center and water waste treatment, are we talking the same thing? I need to have clarification. I put it on here twice, but we'll ask, is this the same thing twice, or is it two different things? And they just happen to have the same dollar amount. Now, the Government Center, I'm going to ask about the platforms for the LAC. I believe those were built last fall. I think they found steel here on site, and I think they built them on the roof over there. I have to ask the fellows if that did get done, and I'll take it off the list. The Government Center Chiltower and Airhander, this is in your budget for '25, with a earmark to be funded by DTR up to $410,000, and if it's more, then we would make a different, you know, reallocation or whatnot, but we're not that far. Administrator Dyer feels that this might be started in '25, and it'll be in '26. Yes?
Yeah, when, when you have that recommended 2025, shouldn't that say included 2025?
I don't do that, this is a living document.
You know, I just would, I would understand it better, because I, it is, I believe these, all these items are included in 2025.
Okay.
And then when you do 2026, can you say proposed?
Sure.
Because I don't know that they're really recommended, they're just, it's what people have proposed.
And you have to make those changes.
Makes sense.
So it's a little, I think it's a little different wording, but I, I understand it better.
I totally understand. Another thing about '25 is we have in the past, we're working toward the end of the fall, going into October, November, December. I can remember the jail dishwasher. It was proposed for the following year. We haven't really spent the contingency money in the current year, and they needed the dishwasher, so we just put it into the '25, that year's budget. So if you find something on here, and you think, let's get it done and get it done in '25, we certainly can consider that as well. The LAC jail humidification replacement, when I remember interim administrator Lewis was here, and he felt those could be bundled with the Chiltower, I don't know where we're at, they were thinking it would be easier to have one engineer handle both projects. I think there's letdown, I haven't touched base with Administrator Dyer on that, so we can talk about that later, they're two different projects. Buildings and Grounds has recommended a wastewater system study. Buildings and Grounds, and I found it in the CIP, are looking for a trailer mount generator. So I'm finding it in two different locations, in the recommended narrative of Buildings and Grounds and the CIP. So I just wanted to let you know, that's where I'm picking things up out of old documents.
Is that for power directors?
Trailer mount generator. I would imagine that is, we have a failure of a generator somewhere, they can move one, is that what you're understanding?
Yes. Yeah, backup, backup.
Yeah. I'm on to the next page. We have from a previous board, I think two boards around, they discarded the idea of a choking system for the whole courthouse and opted to go heat pump replacement over a number of years, so many per year, about $150,000, seven to 10, depending on the size. I know there's small, medium, large. It's, it's something that Administrator Dyer would work with with Buildings and Grounds as to, are they on life support, are they going to fail, you know, where are we at? And they try to make sure that the rotation of those heat pumps are, is not disruptive to the weather. Now, IT, this is a bit of a, this is going to have things from different departments making requests that they would like additional iPads, a laptop, IT buys those, but they're for a department use. The request came from Buildings and Grounds, they like iPads and another laptop. Buildings and Grounds also was looking for a Wi-Fi system upgrade. I believe in reading the narrative, it was to put Wi-Fi into our park system. I think they'd have to work with our IT department, if that's something the board wants to entertain. Also some software, something super rock heavy, I think that's an AI platform.
Yeah, that's the AI.
Okay, that's from Buildings and Grounds. I am getting into a list of things that are, Leanna pulls in your IT tech work home and talking in great detail about these items, which is, we, and you've already addressed replacing safety net for your IT 24/7. Our piece are out, Administrator Dyer is shepherding that. I did replace a folder in her budget for $150,000, because that's what we currently are paying safety net, just so we have a folder. So it's not, there'll be a huge adjustment once we get, we make that award. So that is a placeholder. She typically likes to replace 30 workstations per year, she's opposing that again. Then there's some additional software and things that I will have her speak to, because this is out of my wheelhouse regarding Adobe Acrobat, Rapid Recovery Systems, products from DuePoint. She's also looking for Microsoft Office 365 licensing for all desktops in the entire campus. So, and I know Administrator Dyer is a techie, he likes this stuff, so he'll, he and Leanna will talk with you more about that. Now, some of these parks projects were leftovers from previous year. I know that these... I know that these are all always being discussed at Parks and Rec. I'm not saying I follow them anywhere, except I just know that they're in the CIP, they've talked about it at Parks and Rec, it's things for you all to consider, like the disc golf course, a short course at Mont's Camarly, improving playground equipment. The gazebo refurbishment is still in the CIP. In the CIP is also replacing stairs with a ramp at Old Set Rooms, domestic wires are high issues. That's a leftover. That could have been solved. I have to ask Buildings and Grounds about that. I'm not sure. Then you've got your trail, which is a DNR grant for Veronica Valley. I found in the CIP, prepping lot improvement, improvement for Veronica Valley, I found that in the CIP. And then, this is a leftover from a previous board, a forty course with a bucket tray place of aging John Deere at Veronica Valley. They wanted two pieces of equipment in '25. The previous board approved one. They bought it. So this just got kicked forward. And I will have to talk with Buildings and Grounds to see if they still want this, because you have a new director, since this was all included in place. Then, we left financial or other requests, because the SNA or financial software is to be discussed. I left the exterior security cameras, because that's always been in the CIP. And I put MMRMA grant, question mark, because that's a security thing. You might get filming for it. If that's something you want to... And just a reminder that your DNW mechanical contract expires 12/31/25.
So that's...
That's Gary O'Connor in DNW.
How's that, three years?
Continue.
Three years.
Absolutely, end of a three-year contract. Because he wants to stay.
Does he?
I know that, yeah.
Forever.
No, not forever, but for the next three years, for sure.
And because of the services provided by that contract, I did leave the marker in that budget for that dollar amount, just so that it wouldn't disappear in the back.
What's the current? You know what the current is?
About $25,000. Under $25,000.
A year?
I'll double-check that number. It feels right. Then, going through all the budget narratives of all the departments, I've just made a quick little line item synopsis about requests for personnel, staffing, wages or benefit changes. And each of these departments will come, unless you don't want to, and you say, yeah, good to have them, you know. You just need to have dialogue, so that they are recognized that they're asking. And I brought this up earlier, the class, re-class of a TNT deputy to a school resource officer. I know that at a previous meeting, last one, there was an item about a Teamster one to a Teamster two, secretary to an office manager, I believe. Marine, he wants to adjust his staffing level from four marine deputies to three mid-range deputies and a marine supervisor. He's not asking to change the wage scale, he would just, if there was a marine supervisor there, they would be at the top, I believe is what I read in his narrative. The jail is requesting an increase in their overtime budget. They would like an additional $15,000.
$1,500 or?
$1,500, excuse me. You're right. And it is $1,500. It's not a typo. It is $1,500. The elections budget is, you have pre-proofed staffing level, and we're restoring the funding to the '24 funding, because you have a gubernatorial and primary, the general in '26. So you have to have the staff for early voting and everything that goes with it. So we've copied '24 budget for '26. '25, we do this, because they only have one or two small elections. So when it's full blown, though, if you expect, or you can't expect, if the county wants early voting here, everything goes as it, that's a handful. So that's restoring to what was meant in '24 for the election. Treasurer established, and as a swap out, he wants to take his temporary office assistant to overtime. So that's just neutral.
That's the idea, we're doing temporary office assistants.
Yeah, it's true. So he's just saying, I'm going to zero out my, is this one? So it's neutral. Register of deeds would like to request establishment of a temporary office assistant line item and asking for $500. Drain Commissioner, this is a holdover. I have not spoken to him. I think we'll have a meeting with him tomorrow. Administrator Dyer will ask him if this is a holdover from the previous drain commissioner. I know all these drain commissioners' requests, so we'll ask him about staff help. Then, child period probate, there's a request for probation officer to probate registered diversion counselor to go from hourly to salary. They're currently at 37 and a half hours per week to 40. Then, in Buildings and Grounds, over a two-year period, is how I'm interpreting the document I read, an added staff position to establish a deputy maintenance supervisor. And referencing a person, rather than creating a person, because I'm careful, we talk positions, we don't talk people when we're here. But if that were to be true, it would be moving or reclassifying a Teamster position and reclassing a maintenance worker to Parks Maintenance Manager. That would be a phase in in '27. And that would be asking for a class, a grade change from a one to two, I believe, because of the management aspect of it. And to hire an additional maintenance worker, phase in in '27, which would be a Teamster grade one. And also asking for increased overtime. And then, this is just a notation on this document that Administrator Dyer brought to our attention, and it's just that we don't overlook, something that we'll adapt is to present this as a fair, fair, and can't be trusted. It's no cost. It's not a cost thing. It's just housekeeping. Is that fair to, Administrator Dyer, excuse me, is that fair to say it's like a housekeeping thing?
I think that's fair.
You're missing one whole section, and that is suggested from department heads on ways they could save reductions. We don't have any of that.
I could share with you, there were some voluntary reductions in some departments.
My point was, at last week's meeting, we did talk about the cost of doing business. And since I've been here 14 years, we've never, never considered how we might reduce anybody or consolidate anything. And I think we start with revenue, and then we start with, are there some ways we can become more efficient? But I'm having trouble concentrating, because I was called out by the clerk for not checking with her about live streaming. I have checked the rules of order. It does not prohibit streaming. It does not say just because we've always done it that way, it's against our rules of order. And I am offended that I was called to task, because I asked our administrator and our administrative assistant to livestream this meeting, because I wanted this meeting to be transparent. And I'm having trouble sitting here, because it's the second meeting I've been here, where the clerk, and I did find here, only members of the Board of Commissioners should be given the right to speak during any board, except when called upon or when reported. This is the second meeting that I've been called to task, because I was doing something that the clerk's office didn't like. And I'm asking for a break, because I'm upset. I'd like to take a five-minute break.
All right. Take a five-minute break.
It's important. I'm just trying to...
All right. We're gonna, our five minutes are up. We're gonna continue here. Mr. Bunny?
Yeah, I just want to say, I was the one that brought it up about that. It wasn't the clerk. You know, and it's not on our agenda to have this livestream. Anytime we've livestreamed, it's been on our agenda. So, and it's been a regular tradition that we don't stream committee meetings, and we haven't, I know our last work session was not streamed. So, I mean, I think that it was a reasonable call to say that it shouldn't be being streamed, and it wasn't to call Commissioner Wessel to task. It was just something that I saw wasn't on the agenda and shouldn't happen. So that's, I mean, so I don't understand why, you know, nobody was directing it at him.
All right. Mr. Robbins?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I think it's good that we are streaming these meetings. But what's more disturbing is, is, you know what, you're in, we're Lamont County, we're supposed to be unique, but we sure hell don't act in these meetings. And it's a little tiring to see people, I'm not going to name anybody else, making remarks, chuckling. You know, we're a meeting, let's be professional, let's get through budget, and let's be like we're supposed to be and knock off the, we're not the Kardashian show. I agree with Will. Maybe we should, and if we're going to act like the Kardashians, maybe we shouldn't be livestreaming. But I think we should be, and we need to act professional, knock off the eye contact and laughing.
Any other comments before we continue? All right. Were you finished with the?
We're ready to go. And this is, we're open to some of this. Then, we proposed that, you know, for the council, is asking for a contract extension for $60,000. I know that you all are looking at another presentation or other options. There is more cash, and I can give you your cash balance, so that's just a marker to let you know that there's a request for a new extension, but I also know there are other options.
And that would be one of the things that I think we could include in our budget in brief document that we prepare at the end of this process, to indicate, this is our projection for how much, how many, how many dollars in terms of, over the next 18 years, we're going to receive for opioid funds. Here's what we've already spent, you know, here's the process we're going to undertake once you decide on what that process is going to be, to consider other uses of those funds. And that would be something that we would, I think, include in that document and communicate to our citizens.
I would like to comment on, I used to be on the SUB board, Substance Abuse Disorder Board, and we had a fairly healthy amount of money coming in from the... I can't even remember the name of the building, or COVID Hall. Funding. Well, that's been coming in. The restrictions on using funds for substance abuse programs is really, really tight. And it's best used by professionals in that field. And we have people who know how to navigate, know how to do programs. Their funding has been cut, but the need persists. So I hope we will keep in mind, as those funds come in from the settlement, that they're well-used by the professionals submitting programs and grants to the SUB board. And you have an opinion on that?
Well, no, I don't have an opinion. Just a clear statement. COVID Hall tax, I mean, this is our state...
The liquor tax, but...
Yeah. It's a serious paper on the tax. And it's actually, I'm not, over $500,000?
Almost six.
Yeah, almost six, no. So, we used to be self-funded, we got a lot of self-help in early my tenure, and we have taken distributions from it and allocated to the general fund, just for general operations. As that continues to grow, the reallocations up to this board, that funding is still coming in to my...
It did get cut.
Okay. So I would say, the county, we've actually been...
So maybe it's been added to by other things, but I want to keep in mind that those funds are needed and well-used by the professionals who manage those programs.
And one of the, one of the advantages of our membership in the Michigan Association of Counties is they have a full-time staff person that is well-versed in, in that, in the appropriate use of the opioid settlement funds, and that's the person that's going to be coming at the suggestion of Commissioner Campbell, to give you a presentation on how other counties are dealing with that. Some of them have competitive bidding processes, some of them use internal, you know, for internal purposes. So you'll get, you'll get a lot of information on that, but it's important, I mean, people are aware of a substantial amount of money that's coming to the county, and they want to know how it's going to be used, so.
Campbell?
Two separate subjects. And one, I hope we would have an open mind and not continue to do things because we've always done them. I'm looking for ideas rather than, rather than titles and past programs, but I want, I'm not discounting them at all. I think they, there's been no evaluation of them. I mean, we've never had a report, we've never, I mean, I don't know, I suppose other folks here probably maybe know where these dollars, what good they've done in that community, and I'm sure they have done some good. I think our task is to use them as efficiently as we can, to make sure that they're doing the best good. Is that a word, best good? Is that, I like it.
Sounds like a better...
Yeah.
More good.
More good is even best. I harken back to something that Treasurer Gallagher said earlier, because I, to me, it had weight, and it was just one statement, and then we kind of moved on. And what Treasurer Gallagher said was, we have been running a structural deficit. If you look at our expenditures, they've gone from 18 million, or 15 million to 18 million, and revenues have not kept up. And then, and that's just for, to run our basic, our basic programs. This harkens back to the thought of the order of, that was presented to us from a resident who is very versed in budgets, which said, you must begin, same policy, but it's recommended, you begin with an overall statement of what you're trying to do. And I would say, if we're going to start with an overall statement of what we're going to do, and we're running a structural deficit, and we have a list, and this is not a wish list, the CIP, many, many of these items on the CIP have to get done, then you would start off with a conversation, look at staff, we're all in this together, and we don't have a bottomless pit out here. So everyone requesting more employees, more overtime, more projects, we need to accomplish these items on the CIP that are screaming at us, because they're structural, they're infrastructure in nature. We need to put those at the top of the list. And the requests for budget increases, for things that I'm sure are needed within a department, don't, should not, and we can't give them the same priority as our cooling tower, as, anyways, I just, we're working backwards, and I think at some point, we have to give that message that, no, we have a, we have a very tight budget this year. I'm not, I know I'm the budget guy, and I'm the budget hog, but I really believe that, and the more numbers I see, and the more I hear from our treasurer, I believe this to be true. So it's got to, we have to, we have to lend that, that importance to the conversation to help people to understand that when we make these tough decisions, it's not because our elected officials and our department heads don't have good projects and projects that would help the county, it's that we have to prioritize in order not to go, not to continue the structural deficit that we have.
Mr. Robbins?
I agree with Alan. I mean, I look at certain things here, like, you know, I know you're on the Parks Board, and you know, for... and, you know, four years ago when I was on the Park Four, we still got the same, we're still talking about the same project, here it is four years later, and, uh, but what, what we really need to look at is what's unique about this budget here is, and it's important about this budget, is it's going to set the ground, because we're here for four years now. Before, it's always been a two-year turnaround, you didn't know who was going to be sitting on this board, so we have three years, we have the opportunity to put this together between our finance department and treasurer here. It's great seeing you two sitting together, helping us out. I would hope that maybe down the road, you guys can have weekly, bi-weekly meetings and network together, and bring the facts and the numbers to us. So like I said, this budget is really probably the most important budget in this county's ever seen, because we are here for three more years, and we can set the tone for the future and the future boards ahead of us.
Um, all right, so just, thank you for putting this together, and I guess what I'm going to request, um, for administrator and treasurer and the finance director, um, I, I think the, the next thing to Commissioner Wuss's point early on, the next meeting should be based on revenues, where we can start planning out, because I don't think we can go through this right today and start prioritizing this. I think it was a good educational that she gave, um, that our finance director gave to us, thank you, um, because I think it gives us a good idea of what's, what's coming, what's needed, and what's, you know, what's important, um, as we go through this budget. And I guess what I would like to request is next week, have our treasurer and our finance director go through our revenues, um, and go through, start through that process, so then we can keep going, um, through this process, and then go through departments and figure out how we want to prioritize some of this stuff. Um, but that'd be my recommendation at least, based off of what you've just given us here. Um, and it, it gives us a week to kind of stew on this and kind of figure out, what do we want to see, type of thing, and where do we, the questions we want to know, and some of the, and maybe dig in personally and find out more information about some of these projects, I guess. So, unless anybody has objections to that.
Well, we need revenue.
Commissioner Money?
Yeah, um, I, I guess I, I would like us to, to think about, you know, what they said, I, you know, as, as far as, I like the idea of revenue first, and for that, but, but I also want us to, to look at the $150,000 we've spent for, I would say, the last probably six years on the furnaces, and look at that, you know, try to plan to, to replace with a, a more,
Efficient.
Yeah, a more efficient, better unit, and not be spending $150,000 a year on furnaces to be replaced, because it usually ends up to be that or more. You know, I also, um, I, I would like you to, to read about reclassifying the TNT deputy. I, I know that the sheriff has always had his officers stop at the schools and try to have lunch with the students, you know, so, and he's done that for the road patrol since he's been here, you know, so, so, and, and the way he talks about the TNT is not needed anymore. And so maybe that, and that was always, that was started with a, um, a grant from the state. So maybe it's time that we could look at whether that's needed or not, you know, and, and that, that could be a huge savings. And then, you know, um, we, we should look at the idea that, that they've given every person an extra five hours now to work. So adding new people at this time, once, because I'm not sure that they've, they're using that properly, or maybe we could use it better, that extra five hours a week, and it, and we wouldn't have to add all these people that they're asking for. I, I just want us to think about that, because I've been looking at it, reading through these things, you know, and, and I think that, that we have some opportunities here that we could really work the budget to be much more efficient. So, um, I'm going to look into this, you know, the, the GOFA, or whatever she talked about, but I think that, you know, that, that I like the idea of having a message of doing this, so. I just want us to think about it, and I'm glad we'll be looking at revenue next, next week, or, at our next meeting. Thank you.
You know what, I have, just have a question. When we go from 37 and a half to 40 hours, I think it, are you talking about five hours each page?
Yeah, no, it was, it's 40 hours a week, somewhere, somewhere.
What do you want, 35?
They were working on 35, so it's five hours more a week.
Oh, I thought they were 37 and a half.
No, some 35.
Thank you, I needed to understand that. I thought they were working 37 and a half.
I mean, maybe some, but I don't, the majority were at 35, I believe, so.
Okay.
I think we're kind of working ourselves toward, number one, on that list, which is a budget overview of priorities. One of our priorities might be to hold our staffing levels at their current. Uh, if you want to adjust within them, do things like that, but to at least be neutral as opposed to increasing staffing in this particular budget year. Now, we, I understand there's one part of this A plus B that we don't have, and that's the revenue, although we're pretty close, we've got a budget there, I mean, I don't, I mean, there may be some, some changes there. Um, I would lend my thoughts more towards an overall statement rather than going through department by department, and, uh, and saying, well, we like this department, so, okay, or we don't like that department, so we're not going to, and, and just a generalized statement, because frankly, um, these departments have been established long before we've been around, and, uh, everyone, I don't think there's been anything drastically changed within the responsibilities of our departments.
Commissioner Wuss?
Yeah, I, I, I could, I could get, uh, behind, uh, no total addition of staff, but I do think we have to sometimes take from some departments to put to other departments, because needs over 20 or 30 years changed. And, and I don't, there, there may be something that, in this office, that, uh, much more complicated than it was 10 years ago, 20 years ago. So I, I, it, it's hard to do it because we've got a lot of side outs. But collectively, I look, I think we look at our resources and say, we're not going to add to the number of employees, but we're going to be open to changing some, at least in a long-term plan.
No, and I, I appreciate you bringing that up about adding, because that's something that's, yeah, I, I've been wanting to bring up as well, because I feel like, and I don't know if that's something we're with our administrator on, um, about adding to employees or whatever, until we get through this budget and figure out what we want for 2026 and beyond. Um, so I appreciate you bringing that up, because that is something that, yeah, I feel like we need to send the message out that we want to, yeah, keep things as they are, we're not, we're not breaking, and let's work this year out in budget for next year and the years to come. Commissioner Dyer?
I will hope that we work on actual facts and needs, and not on our preconception of some grand statement we'd like to make. So I want to listen to the people and what's going on and what. Our goal has to be that we serve our, our, our residents. I think that has to be our overriding goal, not edicts that we throw out. What do we need to serve our, our residents? And I'm very willing to focus on keeping costs down.
All right, do we have any other, yes, go ahead.
There were a few departments who voluntarily reduced their overtime line items, and I think we will snap this together on that, where they, and, um, the recollection early on this year, in building safety, was moving from 35 hours to 40, and we totally reduced the overtime in response to that.
Nice.
So it was reflective. And I know going forward for next week, this is for you to marinate on, and please tell me if you don't understand my notes, or if you, I only have some questions, and we'll get some answers. I will always have an updated draft date at the top, and Administrator Dyer and I talked about, everyone organizes themselves, do everything you might, just take them up in your book, or replace, however you do, but I will always have the current version dated at the top, so you know where we're at. And also with regard to marinating on things, because John and I were looking at Page 17, if you were just to round the numbers right now, so you can walk out the door with something in your head, is that your property tax, and this is based on this year's, this year's taxable value, we don't know the future taxable value, who gets me, but we rounded it at $14 million. That's your property tax revenue. This budget, with just a few things from this sheet embedded in it, is at 17.5. So there's $3.5 million that we obtained from other sources. Right now, the other sources that have been plugged in, that John and other departments, because there are many departments that contribute to revenue, it's not just the treasurer's office, they have put their numbers in here, and to balance you, we're using $300,000 of fund balance, just where we stand now. So that's for you to marinate on, so you have some answers.
That $17 million budget also includes those department budgets that are paid for by fees.
No, general fund only.
Okay, so, none of, none of the building safety?
No.
Well, that's a drury thought, $3 million behind.
Revenue stream, though, that we have does reflect their contribution to the general fund and services that we all provide for them, like John's office, my office, and you all, your experience.
But does, but does that conclude the wage increase that we just?
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
To the law enforcement.
The 3%?
Right.
So that's going to jump it quite a bit. So, so maybe at our next meeting, could there?
I don't, I don't think it's done by next Tuesday, but I'm hoping that your budget is done in September, or is it, you don't know?
Well, and then another thing, I'd like, to the points that Commissioner Bunny brought up, maybe get some of those answers as well, when we go through these items, then, you know, to get some answers, and, you know, where we're headed with this, and background and information, you know, and work with our administrator, you know, to get some of the informations that we have, and which I'm sure he would anyway, so.
Yeah, because I, I would, you know, when I mentioned the $150,000 for the, the furnaces, I would like us to try to set up a plan to come up with the $3 million the last time they estimated it, to redo the heating system. So, and I'm sure that's increased probably by 50% now, you know?
You know, we talked about that, we decided we just go with heat pumps.
Right.
So we have to have another,
Right.
Or never, or we, we have to reevaluate that decision.
Yeah.
That's the one.
If we can, if we can, if, if it's up to this board, they're willing to plan, I think then we could look at the DPR funds going towards that or something every year, so that eventually we get there, so we're not borrowing money to do it.
All right, any follow-up questions for our finance director or treasurer? Is there anything you guys want to add?
Just if you need more information, please ask, and I'm happy to, um, show that out to you, you all get it.
All right.
We're going to clarify some of the questions that came out of this review.
Next week, for our presentation, I'm working with ITs, that we can look at the dashboard together, understand what state has been reporting based on financials, and how we measure up because of substance abuse, that is, that, um, and drill through that, and then also bring out the general interest, and go through, run, print out the words, and real figures for all the questions.
All right.
Be a little bit of a presentation.
Thank you. Do you have any follow-up?
No, I think we have a clear, I have a clear understanding of what you want to see at your next meeting, and I'll make sure that you, that you get that. You know, it's possible, and to Commissioner Campbell's comment, it's possible that an accurate, um, projection of revenue would reduce what appears to be now a structural deficit in budget. It's very possible that your actual revenue really would not necessitate a, a fund balance transfer if we had a really much better handle on that than we have had up to this point. So, we'll find out.
All right, thank you. We'll go on to public comment. Do you have none? Mr. Comments? Mr. Robbins?
Well, since we're on finance, uh, I think what, back in June, we, uh, passed that, uh, trial 90-day period for building safety on the vehicle, and I didn't want to wait till September, because we're, you know, we're getting close to that 90 days, so what I'd like to see, instead of wait until the 90 days, for halfway point, I'd like to know the actual cost, what it's costing, the mileage, and, uh, let us know where we're at, because I think it's probably a pretty expensive item we're paying right now.
I have a meeting scheduled with, um, the director regarding that, that issue, I think it's maybe next Wednesday.
And then one more thing, and I thought of two, uh, I don't know if it can be done between HR and finance, but on this MERS, this early, you know, people buying years, I don't know if we can, because I've been talking, I got a call into Tony, I want to talk to him, but, uh, I mean, I was approached by a former HR person at a larger county, um, about, she watched our meeting, and, uh, is it possible to do some analysis, take a dummy employee of so many years, pay in? And because I do feel, from what I was told, yes, it does sound like it's neutral now, but down the road, if they live long enough, it is a cost to the county.
It can be, yeah.
And if we start getting more people retired, which we are, I mean, at some point, not with this board, but down the road, it could be a big cost to the county.
Yeah, and, and one of the, the things that you really take a look at for that is, is how you're funding on a, you know, what level, what percentage are you funded? As long as you're maintaining that, that's, that's a good sign that those, those, those retirement purchase, service purchase credits are not impacting you negatively, particularly if you're fairly consistent with the, the numbers, the, the dollars that you're paying into it, uh, so. But if you're seeing a downturn, that does, that is an indication that perhaps those are making a difference. It's a good point.
Commissioner Campbell?
Uh, uh, just, uh, Jim, the Housing North reports, have you contacted them? Are they going to provide us those reports?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Uh, I think, and we were talking about the housing, the, the deficit, I understood what you're, what you're saying about the revenue. The, the issue then becomes the CIP, uh, projects that really have to get inserted in. So we could, we might be able to eliminate the, the $300,000, but then like lose a year of progress needed on projects that we can't lose a year of progress on. So eventually, we're going to have to plug that into the formula, uh, so that we, and that's, you know, that's a discussion here, I'm one-seventh in that discussion, but I'll bet you that we would come up with pretty close to the same, uh, to the same projects that are not, uh, not optional, but required. Um, and I don't know, I, I, as far as the, the whole clerk discussion, I have appreciated the history provided, uh, I don't know if there needs to be a better way of communicating that, uh, for, for, for the clerk or deputy clerk to provide us information if she, if she has it, but I have appreciated, and I know it's helped this board in certain times, provide a history that goes beyond even Ty's tenure.
Will's laundered me.
Well, okay, that's even Will's tenure. Anyways, those are my thoughts, thank you.
Any other questions, your comments? All right, I will, I, I guess, just based on the discussion that was held earlier today about streaming, I would like to request our administrator to even look at, because I think it is beneficial to the public and, you know, to, to stream it. So whatever that looks like to make that happen, I would like for, yeah, our administrator, whoever, clerk, whatever, to look into that, see if we can make that happen, because I think it, it is beneficial to the public to do that, if that's something we have to change, um, in policy, or is that just maybe that's something we've never done, and now continue to do it, I think that'd be wise, so. to do it, I think that'd be wise, so I would like to request that, so. But that's for adjournment.